Okay.
Yeah, it was with the cards. Thank you. Can you guys hear me? Hopefully. All right, so I'll go ahead and call the village board meeting to order. Penny, will you call the roll, please?
Trusty Guyer.
Here.
Trusty Spurling.
Here.
Trusty Lee.
Here.
Trusty Youngerman.
Here.
Trusty Marisak.
Here.
And Trusty Betzinger.
Here.
And we do have a quorum. Actually, we have everybody in this room for the first time since March. So with that, if you guys would be so kind, I would love to do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
For which it stands.
On the nations.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wait, delay. You did it. Thank you. Rolling along, first item is public participation. The first item is public comment. Two-minute opportunity for any member of the public to address the board. I should state that although every board member is here, we are operating this meeting pursuant to the governor's executive order for allowing for remote meetings. So we do have a number of staff that are attending virtually, and the public could also attend virtually if they so choose. So with having said that, is there any member of the public that's not on the agenda elsewhere that's in the room here that would like to make public comment this evening? I don't think I see anyone. And then Jeff, is there anybody on the Zoom or that had emailed you previously about speaking this evening?
Nobody has talked to me previously about it. Let me see. Not seeing any hands up or any questions from the audience here.
All right.
Either.
All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to item B, which is the MEDC update. Char, welcome.
Welcome. Where do I go?
And the floor is yours. I suspect he's going to move and you can go in his spot.
Yep.
But I could be wrong.
I think you're right about that.
I started to make up a new disease called COVIDitis, where you're sitting too long, like 12 hours. But anyway. Hello, everybody. It's so exciting to see you all. I was hoping we would miss the snow or was hoping that it wouldn't start until we were all home. But that's okay. It's close enough. So I'm not going to be really quick, but I'm not going to be really slow either. I did provide a packet to everybody. And then in addition to that, attached to the packet is a two-page document, which actually is a report that I do for ComEd. And I know some of you like numbers, so sometimes I forget them as I'm talking. So the slides are primarily just to keep me. Do you need something? Okay. See, that's what's. No, I have extra.
He had, there was one up there.
There's extra.
He's got it. There's one up there.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's one of the things that's tough about the Zoom meetings is I could see you, you know, and you not always can see. And then you don't know if somebody needs something or doesn't understand something. So again, the slides are here just to help me stay focused. And I will add detail as we move along. So I went through the thank you. And for the Zoom people who do have the slides, the additional document, we can always send later if you don't have that, which basically is just a report that just talks about the improvements, job creation, highlights, investment, and so on. And we'll go through those. So basically, my purpose here is just to recap where we've been since my last visit with you, which actually was in June. And at that time, we were just a few months into the COVID. And I'm still proud to say, at the end of March, the Reich brothers, who New York got hit much harder than we did, still ended up closing on the cat property. And as we all wished, they saved the 500 jobs with the lease back on the 100,000 square feet. In addition to that, April, May, June, all the way up until today even, there has been about five to six different prospects looking at the Caterpillar site. And that, to me, says a lot as far as the economy goes. We do have activity in manufacturing. Montgomery has proven to be able to draw labor. I've sent reports out to many companies who have asked. And that is one of the reasons we're having a lot of nice activity. There were two, there were two leases that sold or closed. Currently, they're not selling any of the property. They're leasing it, which is fine. The main thing we want is to bring in new jobs and new investment into the community. So the first one was some gentleman who ended up taking 10 acres, 15,000 a month for truck parking. And then the second one just closed. It's 170,000 square feet. And I actually brought the grid with me in case anybody asks a question about where that 170,000 square feet is. Yes, Steve?
Do you want us to ask questions at the end?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that would be better. Is that okay?
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. Okay. So one of the things that I just wanted to bring out was the learning curve for everyone, from the businesses to the village, to the community. And the main message that we got out there and we still are getting out there is that we care about their business and they know that we're there. We've worked on numerous different applications. And although Denny told me to be careful to not say they're doing good, they're doing, many of them are doing much better than expected. And I only know of two businesses that have closed so far in Montgomery. The first one is the Archery Place, which again, any business that is completely shut down is very difficult to stay open. This morning, I got a call from the Learning Center. That building is going to be available, is available. So we'll be looking for something to repurpose that. But those are the only two that I know of. I do know your health clubs, like Planet Fitness, is struggling, but they're still open and doing good. So that being said, another thing that I find very exciting, and it really started April, May, June, and into, sometimes it takes a little bit longer, and especially during the pandemic, to close a manufacturing deal or a sale of a deal because you're going back and forth and so on. We had four buildings close on Ockott Road. And what that means is we ended up with new jobs, new businesses, and new people in the community. And in the attached sheet, you'll see the numbers, the square footage, and so on and so forth. One of them is the 911 Building, which was vacant almost two years, which was the old 911 Building. And then the Park District, that was purchased by a construction company out of Oswego. And the good news is, for the village, it'll be back on the tax rolls. And the investment in these buildings are also very important to the village because of the increased value. And also, on the building that was previously the Vesco property, Paul Straits was able to stay in his building, sell the building, and also bring in, they have a new, you know, new owner. And I believe they added six jobs, and the Comfort Keeper one added 13 new jobs. So again, these people are investing, and it gives us an opportunity also to lease out additional space if we need to. And currently, we really don't have a whole lot of small space. So again, for going through a pandemic, we're very fortunate. We have such a mixed, mixed group of, I call them products. And by products, I mean land, manufacturing, retail, and so on. The village has done a very good job, and I know this has come up. Jared, I know, is behind me, and Rich is on this, on this call, with the unified code. I don't even know how you call all those acronyms, but basically, the planning of the village and how it's structured and what goes where. And I want to just compliment you all for doing that because it also helps me do my job. And if one business goes out, I still have many others to work on. So I'm already out of breath here. Let's see. Knowing you're in Toastmasters, they have these little numbers that you could put up and you could say, three, two, one, Char, stop. Okay. So looking towards the future.
Are you still, I'm sorry, Char, are you still on slide one?
I love you, Doug. No, that's good. See? That's.
Your papers are on top, so it's hard to see.
That is, there's got to be an arrow. Okay, here we go. Okay, so that helps me. Thank you. Because I was just, I'm sorry. So the recap, we talked about the Reich brothers, the learning curve. I always have a lot of hope. I'm an optimistic person. I am a cheerleader for Montgomery, and you all have been very good at that as well. It's a, it's a joint effort. So I just, just want to say that. It's very difficult for me to say, you know, to look at the bad side of things because there's always an opportunity there. Here, I just laid out some of the different things that we were able to do. The Douglas Road Corridor and the downtown also, two areas of importance to the village. And I also think it was very important to mention that we had three restaurants open during the pandemic. And one on Douglas, obviously Baba's. And Baba's has brought in new investment because they're constantly bringing people from outside the area. And then Nancy with the Dairy Queen Building has added a new, not only a new nail salon, but a new service that you could only, you could not only do your nails, you could also have a glass of wine, if you drink wine. So we haven't had any grand openings because of COVID. That doesn't mean we haven't had any openings. So hopefully, we'll be able to do one for the nail salon. Again, I mentioned the positive, whatever it takes, trying to find out what it is that the business community and the residents need. One of the things that I found throughout this whole pandemic is the quality of jobs sometimes that are needed and people and companies needing a person, but not necessarily having a job title specific to that person. So I worked with web links and we're creating, it's already created, a page that will allow you as a resident or community, or if your neighbor calls you. On our website, we'll have a place for you to post basic job descriptions or duties. And you can go in there and contact the company. You can attach PDF files and so on. And it works both ways. So we want to help the people looking for a job. We want them to stay local. And then we want to help the businesses in the community find local people because they work harder. That's the truth. It's just how it works. You know, if you're traveling for four hours, it's kind of difficult then to put in another nine hours. So that's where I talk about adding the resources. We came up with Montgomery to Go. Right away, I had, I had a bunch of people assist me. And it's just a place to highlight different businesses' specials, how you can get there. It's open to retail. The only restriction I put on it is you should be within a 50-mile radius of Montgomery, but it's pretty much been focused on Montgomery and Oswego. Sometimes Yorkville or Aurora might post something. But we also want them to look at the restaurants in Montgomery as well. As far as working towards the future, we have several buildings still, some large buildings that we're looking to hopefully get occupied. One is very close to a deal right now. They're doing some estimates. And that one is 1,400 jobs. And the investment is triple the size of the whole cat property. And that being said, I did sign an NDA. So there's only so much that I could say. But I can tell you that they're already in the process of getting estimates of what it would cost to make that building work. So that tells me we go from number three to number one. And that's very positive. They said we were the only community that actually did a virtual tour. And by a virtual tour, I don't mean one of those droids flying through the air. What I mean is, we had people go in a golf cart and literally with a camera, take the business through the building. And that happened with two tours, which again, is awesome for the community. Here, I just have a few pictures. The La Chiquita Building is complete. The shell is complete. I don't have a listing sheet yet, so we don't know what the rates are. They're working on that. They do have a signed tenant for a sandwich shop. They're basically looking for opportunities to add other retail to the area. That building also went up during COVID. Again, beautifully done. Again, the Douglas Road Corridor. A lot of our businesses are very loyal to us. And by us, I mean the community, and they keep their investment here. That's important. Now, on the right side is McAllister's. But on mine, it looks the same for you, too. So I don't know how to, I could probably minimize that. But anyway, it's McAllister's. And McAllister's was kind of nervous at the beginning. It seemed like it took a while for, I better not do that. Now I'm going to redesign this. I'm so sorry. I don't work with these mousepads. I, anyway, we're at the end of the slides, anyway. McAllister's. And then the grid. Is that showing? And then, of course, all the needed services, which include the banquet facility and all the work that the village did with the Wurst Kitchen. And Grace Mill will be an added asset to the downtown and bring new development here. I get calls at least once a week. In addition to that, the apartment complex, again, what a great addition to Montgomery. I visited them several times. And I know before the holidays, they were 50% filled with their first building. Again, a needed service in the area. And now we could get to questions. I think, unless I answered your question, Steve.
No, I've got a bunch of questions, please.
Okay.
On the first signed lease, the 10 acres for truck parking provides needed service, truck driving schools, uses a portion of the lot. So 10 acres out at the CAT site, correct?
Correct.
Is it indoor or outdoor?
It's outdoor.
Okay. And that's great. But I'm going to tell you, as a village, a Montgomery board member, I'm more interested in the manufacturing jobs. What happens as that continues to develop? And if one of the tenants that is coming in needs that acreage? What happens there?
I am so ahead of you, but you are awesome. What we did was, we put it in the lease that if the parcel or the parking was needed for a possible tenant, that we would be able to relocate them. So there's, that's been addressed. And another thing, because I know many of us don't like to sit behind a truck, unless it's Old Dominion Truck or Performance Foods. But the thing with this particular company was they had contracts with food vendors and food companies in the city that were getting forced out of the city. And what that does for us is it gets other people to look at our community and then consider relocating and bringing their manufacturing here. The only thing is, manufacturing takes a little bit longer because of equipment and so on. But we do have three manufacturers that are in the food industry looking. And part of that is generated through that activity. So the other thing we have also, which I know is an issue for you, Teresa, sometimes, is trucks not having somewhere to go or parking illegally. We've created a venue with this center that would allow a trucker to come in and go to that site and rent it, you know, for a short period of time. We don't want tired truck drivers on the road. We don't want them parking in the middle of Montgomery Road. We want them to have an opportunity to get away from us. And, you know, the sooner they're on and off the highway, the better off we are. So that was the whole reason behind that particular deal. And at the time, the money was very important, obviously, to the Reich brothers just because they needed money coming through the system. So that was a well-thought-out and addressed plan. But great question, Steve.
My next question. McAllister's, now that they've opened up, I know that it's a five-unit retail. Are there any other tenants for that building that you know of?
Not yet. It's, they haven't even poured the concrete. So originally, and that's what took some of the time as far as the construction, the owner was hoping that both sides, you know, the N units would be filled. So that's why he kind of dragged his feet a little. But I'm glad that he moved forward because I think there will be more activity. The problem is obviously COVID. I believe that N unit does have an opportunity to have a drive-through. I'm not positive, but I think it does, which then could be helpful to another. It can't be, obviously, a deli or something that competes with McAllister's, but it could be pizza or something else. So, but no, I have not heard anything since, God, back before COVID.
My next question. Has anyone shown any interest in any of the inland property because of that apartment complex now?
Not yet, but I, I would guess that it will snowball into something, obviously. I know that there's some land there. The problem is how the land's divided, and inland's been kind of distant lately. So it's something that we need to work on and find out, you know, what they're willing, you know, to separate, what's available. So I'm, are you talking about the hill or are you talking?
I'm talking about the whole thing. Whatever inland's got there. The people that live in those apartments are going to need some sort of adjacent uses if they decide that they want to go out for a sandwich or, you know, something.
Oh, yeah. I believe that something will develop. You can walk to the library. You can walk to Sam's. You could walk to Bone of Beef. It's, it's not that big of a hike. So again, I believe that retail will probably be developed. I would have to see if Jared or Rich know what lots we have available. The only ones that, that I had worked on had to do with the hill. And one was a hotel, and that was a few years back. And then the medical center, which was looking, which probably, we could probably make some room over there for a medical opportunity. But I will find out, and we will look and see what's available and what kind of marketing's being done. And we will help them market it.
Okay, please. And my last question. I know when driving home, I take Ockent Road home and I see VVF. And I know that they have pulled out, but there, I believe there's some sort of use in there now because every once in a while, I'll see 15 or so cars there.
Who are you talking about? I missed that.
VVF.
Oh, VVF, okay.
I understand it's not in the village. So we're somewhat limited on what we can do. But do you know, has there been any interest in taking over the VVF location?
There has. There was actually already a letter of intent. And they have about 90 people there over three shifts. What had happened during the pandemic was, in spite of them turning off the equipment for the bar soap, they actually ended up having to restart the line. And so they increased operations. And I know they were past 90. I don't know where they are today. Most of the gentlemen that I worked with have all retired. But one of them, I still have his cell number, and we'll be able to get ahold of him. So I can find out. The, the interested party was probably not something that would have, would have been advantageous to the village. So I don't want to say I'm glad they went away, but I know the deal fell apart. And so I'm hoping that there'll be other uses because there has been interest when it's related to the use of the rail. Because half the building can be accommodated with a rail, with rail spur. The problem is just the way that building is laid out and how old the building is.
Okay. I think, yeah, I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to take a second and thank you, Char, for, I know you worked tirelessly throughout the pandemic with local businesses with PPE loans, personally helping them walk through applications and continuing to advocate for finding employers, employees and employees' jobs. So thank you on behalf of the Village Board that you work hard to try to get everything rolling in the right direction here. So I appreciate it. And again, the golf outing was a huge success.
I forgot that. We made $13,000. 103 people came. And thanks for reminding me, and nobody got sick. So.
Yeah, and it was, it was a really great opportunity, even considering that it was in September and we were in the middle of the pandemic.
Correct.
Just the camaraderie and the people talking and getting along and having a good time. So thank you for all the efforts with that. Because that was, that was a big ask during the pandemic to get people to show up and come play golf. So.
Thank you both, because you were both there. They helped. They worked, too.
So let's trust you, Guyer.
Yeah, my first time, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You were there, too.
I lied.
At the receiving, oh, yeah.
I do have one more question.
Okay.
As far as the 130,000 square feet, the Steel Company, the second lease has been signed. Do we know when they're going to start coming in and making changes? And when will they be up and running?
It's, it's going to take a while. There already is a crane there, which is, which is a good thing. But it's going to take at least six to eight months to get that crane operational and then for them to move some manufacturing equipment. It might be another year before the employees actually come in. But the lease is signed.
Okay. No, as long as they're starting down that path and continue down that path, that's great. Thank you. Now I have a question for staff, if I may. As long as we're talking about this and, and the CAT facility, does any of staff have an update where we are as to annexation in that process?
We, we have a, this is Rich. We have a conference call between the two attorneys Wednesday afternoon to go through the, the draft annexation agreement. So I believe that there'll be a public hearing probably in March or April for the annexation agreement.
Okay, thanks, Rich. Okay, thanks, Rich.
All right. Thank you, Shar. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you, Shar.
All right. Well, Jeff's looking for his stuff. We'll go ahead and move on to the consent items. I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the Village Board meeting, training meeting of December 14th, minutes of the Village Board meeting of January 11th, accounts payable through January 21st, 2021, reappointment of Mildred McNeil James to Plank Commission, reappointment as well to ZBA. And item F is the COVID-19 sick leave policy we discussed at the last meeting.
So moved.
Call roll.
Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger. Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
And trustee Spurling.
Yes.
I carry 6-0. Thank you. Under items for separate action this evening, we have a PSA with EEI for EPA Required Risk and Resilience Assessment and Emergency Response Plan. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Brody. So as you stated, the village is obligated to perform a risk and resilience assessment, emergency response plan per the American Water Infrastructure Acts of 2018. Village staff is recommending this PSA to be completed by EEI for the amount of $59,672. This, this risk and resilience is split into different segments for different communities based on population size. So based on the Village of Montgomery, our risk and resilience would be due June 30th, 2021. Therefore, we are asking tonight for approval to get this process started. Timeline is included in the board packet. If anyone has any questions, I am happy to answer those at this time.
I'm sorry, Director Wolf. I, I think I missed, how often does this come up?
This is the first, I believe Engineer Wallers may be able to correct me on this. The village previously conducted a vulnerability study. I believe it was in 2016. Is that correct, Pete? This is a, a new policy that was adapted or, or put into place in 2018. So this will be the risk and resilience we're putting forward.
Yeah, so the last one was targeted more towards hostile actions, you know, terrorism things. This one is designed to also address terrorism, but is probably more focused on the type of events that we would normally expect to see that would cause us, you know, trouble like flood, tornado, ice storm. It can be any number of things. And the community goes through, the water department will go through all the threats that are out there and, and select the ones that are most probable, that have the highest level of impact. And then we design the program around that so that it's a usable document. I would say that while it was important to do the threat assessment for, you know, terrorist attacks, it, it's going to be more valuable to us to have this plan in place to be able to address, you know, natural hazards, which is probably our bigger threat. But it could be anything, you know, shortage of chemicals. You just go through basically an array of different threats that might face the water department.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions for Pete or Mark? Is there a motion?
Second.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Thank you. Carries 6-0. Thanks, Pete. Rolling into item B this evening, we have waiver of bids and award of contract, Lane Christensen for well 14 rehab. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Brody. So staff is recommending the approval of a task order with Lane Christensen to perform well maintenance and rehabilitation on the village's well 14 site. The cost to perform this work was requested in accordance with the December 16th, 2016 PSA with Lane Christensen and the village for well maintenance. The work items and detailed, are detailed on the bid schedule included in the board packet. Total amount is $243,480.50. Please note that in accordance with the PSA, Lane Christensen has extended appropriate discounts and they will be reflected in the total. Also note that additional alternate bid items are requested in the schedules should use of the alternate bid items be required due to conditions uncovered during the rehabilitation process of the well. The village will process a change order per village policy and will request necessarily, necessary approval from the board. If there are any questions with this work, I am happy to answer those at this time.
I have a couple, if I may. Why do I feel like we're always doing well maintenance?
So the village takes a very proactive approach compared to some other municipalities when it comes to wells. We schedule ours based on previous history of the wells and pumping data. We also, what we've done, and in this instance, we've taken a well that wasn't, actually, our well four site was next to be up for rehabilitation, but wasn't showing any signs of, of a need for that. Our well 14 is now dropped off. We think possibly could have some issues going on there that we want to definitely resolve. We're still able to utilize that well right now, but not to its full capacity. So that's one of the reasons that we try to stay proactive on top of the maintenance so we don't have catastrophic fails such as we did at well 15, which was a little bit of a unique situation, not quite related to this specifically. But in general, we take a proactive approach when it comes to keeping our wells up in good standing.
My second question, why is this higher than the engineer estimate by $13,000?
So there's a couple of things here that the staff did note that the cost estimates that came in from Lane Christensen were substantially, or not substantially, but a bit higher. We did do a bit of research. There's a neighboring community to our north that has a large-scale well project that just went out to bid very relative to when we got our quotes from Lane. And they also saw almost the exact same increase that we had from our engineers' estimates. So we're seeing that it's, it's an increase across the board. Note too that this particular well is a Byron Jackson, Byron Jackson, excuse me, motor with a mercury seal. So it's in the village's best interest to move forward with Lane Christensen for the specific rehab as they have the backing from the manufacturer to be able to perform the maintenance on that particular, that particular well and pump. If we cannot keep that well and pump, we'll have to go to something that's not quite as good in quality. So we definitely want to keep that in our, in our forefront.
Are mercury sealed pumps more difficult to work on?
They can be, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mark, how old is that well? It seems like the last couple of years, oh, we, we've seen well 14 in fixing the motor, fixing this fix. Seems like we're doing more on 14 than anything. How old is that well?
I can't give you the date. Pete, I'm not sure if you know this either off the top of your head, but the, the last well that we had major issues with was, was well 14. And sometimes the confusing fact is we use our, we use the term well 14 for actually our Fairfield Treatment Center a lot of times.
Okay.
So we could be correlating those two together. But we did have significant issues last year with our well 15 site, which pumps to our well, what we call our well 14 or Fairfield Treatment Center to be sent out as processed water.
Okay, thank you.
Are you going to lower the depth on this when you reinstall it or?
That hasn't been determined at this time. First, we'll go through the process of pulling the well and getting an analysis on the column piping and pumping motor. And then we'll go to the next steps after that.
Are they actually rehabbing the motor or are they replacing it?
Our intent is to rehab the pumping motor if they're in good enough standing. Do we definitely want to keep the motor? As far as that goes, sometimes we may have to replace pumping assemblies and sometimes they can be rehabilitated. So.
All right.
So moved.
There you go.
Second.
Call roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And trustee Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. The last item for separate action this evening is a construction manager agreement with Camacy. Is that how you say that?
Camosi.
Camosi, construction. Director Van Doren.
Thank you, President Brody. In front of the board tonight is a construction manager agreement with Camosi Construction. It consists of two documents. The A133, which is an agreement between the owner and construction manager for guaranteed maximum price. And then the A201, general conditions of the contract for construction. We did send out a RFP on November 11th. We had a mandatory pre-proposal meeting and site visit on November 17th, which had 16 firms show up. We ended up receiving 12 proposals from construction management firms and selected three of those firms to interview on December 18th. From their discussions about the interviews were done and Camosi was selected between the three. One thing I will note, I don't know if it's my dyslexia or what, but the construction phase fee on the cover says 124,500. It's actually 214,500. And the total is $828,157. Of the three firms that we selected to interview, this was actually the lowest price. That is not the only reason we selected them. They gave a very good presentation. And the team that they presented with, us with, has worked together for over 30 years. So we felt Camosi was the right firm.
Can you explain like who from our staff, and I'm sure Williams was involved at some point, was involved in the interviewing? And what have they built in this area that might be comparable? Or what have they managed?
I do not have that off the top of my head, but I can get it for the board, send it out. They are from Zion, Illinois. So they are, some of their projects have been farther north. But included in the interview process was Administrator Zofel, Director Wolf, myself. We also had Mark Bushhouse and Mark Rody from Williams on the call. I was just going to say, and Pete from EEI on the call as well. So the, like I said, one of the major reasons we selected them, all three firms were good, very qualified. But one of the major reasons we selected them was the team that they presented to us. So.
Mark?
Lake County DOT and Gurnee Public Works.
Did you hear?
No.
Mark just mentioned they had done Lake County DOT and Gurnee Public Works building.
Okay. So they do this type of work and the fact that they've done it up north and may as well have done it here as far as I'm concerned. So it's perfect. Thank you.
I'm full of questions today. Okay.
Did we get here early or something?
I've just been saving them up the last 10 months. Okay, we have a construction manager now. I'm assuming that we're starting to get into kind of what I deal with a little bit as far as the contracts and stuff. We're going to follow specs to the T, whether it be from flooring to lighting, the size of shrubs outside, depth of soil. Because if something calls for something and it's not that, who, who, who are we going to go to when it's not that?
That is what the construction manager is there for. They will have a superintendent on site every day.
I understand that process. The superintendent doesn't decide what goes in and, and happens. That's project manager, project executive, those sorts of things. Are we going to follow the specs? And so when someone sees something that's not up to spec, it's going to be dealt with immediately?
Yes.
Okay. Change orders, is it a five plus five or is it a five plus 10? Overhead and profit, what are we doing as far as there's got to be a process as far as change orders? Because otherwise contractors are going to say, no, we're going to give you this. We're going to give you that.
So with the contract with Camosi, what they've told us is their general conditions depends on the number of months and the value of the building. So this is proposed as $11 million. That doesn't include their fee. That doesn't include the fee for the architect. And it would not include site work. They're not managing that piece. So their fee does not have a built into it overhead and profit now.
Are we going to get back up with, as we go through this process and do change orders? Because on change orders, you get usually 5% for overhead, 5% for profit, right? And that's how they're doing change orders now. Are we, are we going to stick with that? And in order to do that, are we going to get all the backup documentation that shows this is what the material costs are? This is what your labor costs are. Are we getting rate sheets that show all of this information?
So what the construction manager will do is after bidding, and this is the, the contract, the A133 for guaranteed maximum price. So they will, after bidding, I understand that there may be things change here or there, but they are giving us a price, guaranteed maximum price that it should not exceed now.
I'm going to real quick. So this is, so he's asking, so this is their fee. I get that. It can change
Right.
with the total cost of the project, right? It'll, it'll get updated as things go on. I think what Steve's getting at is the actual $11 million in change orders during construction, which I'm, I'm certain that staff or the architect or Camosi know. But we'll get to that.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
That there are people on the board that are going to be looking at it. So, okay.
We'll get there.
That kind of goes on my question. So this A28, 157 is not the guaranteed maximum price at this point in time?
So the guaranteed maximum price is in regards to the value of the building, the $11 million. They are going through right now, working with the architect to look at all the pricing that the architects have put in that we had previously brought to the board. They are looking at ways to value engineer, looking at, instead of, like one of the things that came up was overhang, like from the building. They brought up that there is an additional cost to have an overhang over the side of the building. So those are things that they're talking to the architect right now, trying to get closer to an estimate that they feel comfortable with. So we are at the end of schematic design right now. And Camosi should have a, an estimate for the village should be the end of next week that they feel more comfortable with rather than what had been put together by the architect.
So if we approve this, we're going to be approving this without knowing what the guaranteed maximum price is at this time?
So that guaranteed maximum price is, there's an amendment to the A133. It's A133 Exhibit A. When all of the bids are done, that is when they'll give us the guaranteed maximum price. When all of the bids are done, that is when they'll give us the guaranteed maximum price. That's when we bring it back to the board and the board will approve it at that point. This is just their fee.
Got it. Okay. And it's based on $11 million. So if between then and now, if we increase it to 13 million, there's going to need to be an amendment. Basically, their fee is essentially a percentage of our total construction cost.
Yes.
Not including soft costs.
Which if you look in the A 133 document, their construction fee is 1.95% of the $11 million. And then you've got bonds and insurance. I don't remember the percentages off the top of my head, but the two of them together are not do do not exceed 1%. It's like 0.95%. And then they'll have the general conditions, which that is the second document that the board's approving that I mentioned that they're looking at the general conditions is the length of time. It's not the value.
Okay.
I'm I'm okay with all of that and I'm okay with their fee. But I've been involved with plenty of projects that may have a GMP maximum of 12 and a half billion dollars and they end up at 15. That's why I ask these questions.
You will have both Director Wolf and myself are in the contracts that any changes have to go through us. Any any changes have to be discussed between the architect, construction manager and the two of us. So we will, we will stay on top of it.
Okay.
I apologize, I don't recall the page exactly, but I do remember that we there was language in that if the change is for something that's comparable, but you, you know, we found a better deal on something, that's an easier swap to do. But there's, you know, more hurdles to jump for if the change order is for another reason. So we tried to lessen the burden if, you know, we just happen to find, you know, they happen to get a better deal on a same quality product. But for all other cases, there'd be a more stringent process.
Yeah, it's usually easier to give money back. Yeah.
Thank you. Good to hear from you, Laura.
Yeah.
She smiled.
Yeah. When are we going out to bid on this?
So there will be multiple bid dates, just based upon what it is. They are looking at an early bid package for structural steel and precast concrete walls. That would be May 13th. Bid packages for the remainder of the items would be June 24th. And then there would be a separate bid package for the civil the site work.
Yep.
So and I don't happen to have a date on that one right now, but.
All right. Perfect.
I'll say full disclosure, right now I work for a company that does business with Camacy or Camosi. Twin Oaks will not be bidding on the project.
Neither will I. I don't have a construction company, I just figured I'd say that.
Steve, did you say will not?
Will not.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Justin. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Justin or staff on this? I'm assuming we will see an update on the building or anything like that sometime soon. I know you guys said you're finalizing schematic.
Finalizing schematic. We've been told that we should have an updated estimate of cost next week, which will certainly make the board aware of.
Yeah. Yeah. We're seeing a dramatic increase in house costs right now in my day job. So I'm hopeful that that does not mean bad things for this building, so.
Freight. What's that? Freight is projected to go up 26%.
Yeah.
For for us, for shipping because of fuel and trucking costs, so.
They raised freight costs six, seven years ago when gas was four, $5 a gallon and it never came back down.
Nothing goes down.
It's ridiculous.
Lumber cost is up.
Any other questions for?
The last thing I would mention, if the board can approve this subject to attorney review, there's a few minor areas that of language that we are still trying to nail down exactly, so.
Okay. Certainly.
Motion to approve subject to attorney review.
Second. Any further discussion?
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
I carry 6-0. If you could, just make sure that we get, I don't know that we need a copy of the entire contract, but anything, any edits that were made from this point on that that we would like to know about or need to know about, please let us know. I know the board usually likes the copy of things after the fact. All right. Moving on to our two items for discussion this evening, thank you, Justin, appreciate it. Is the liquor license request from Hacienda El Dorado. All right. I'll ask Administrator Zofol to kind of give a brief introduction, then we'll hear from the applicant and we'll go forward.
Certainly. It's something we've done lots of times. So when we get a request, the requesting party is here, they can give you the reasons for their request, tell you what their plan is. And then we'll just be looking at you guys, is it something you want to move forward with, the background checks, that kind of thing? If you need more information or if you are not interested. And with that, I'll ask the party to come down and talk to you.
Good evening to everyone.
Good evening. Thanks for waiting.
We are the owners of Hacienda El Dorado, a restaurant in Montgomery Road. And we've been seeing that every restaurant has been hit very hard by the pandemic. And we were thinking and talking about ways to increase the sales. And one of the things that it come up is getting the liquor license. The liquor license, why? Because a lot of customers are being requiring like having something to eat and having a glass of wine, margarita, beer or things like that. We were not thinking to do it before because we were doing well in sales. When we get hit, that's when everything start to come up to think about different ways to increase more, well, getting more sales in the restaurant. So we're here to request a liquor license. If we are approved, I think we will bring three to four new employee employees in the restaurant. We used to have, well, we lost like half of the employees because of pandemic. So if we get the liquor license, we planning to get like four more people. And I think it will help everybody economically.
Okay. Do you currently have any other facility or liquor license anywhere else?
No, no, no.
All right.
How long have you owned this restaurant?
Three years.
Three years?
Yes.
And you're you're requesting the Class G liquor license, which I believe is our restaurant license. It requires that at least 50% of your revenue be from the sale of food.
Oh, yeah.
Do you see any issue?
No, there's not, not a problem. Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Chief, have we had any issues at Hacienda El Dorado that you know are aware of? Okay. Thank you.
Are you planning to bring in any gaming machines?
Right, I think in the beginning, no, but all depends, all depends how it works. Then we will, we will see, we will bring gaming machines. I mean, it's not a problem if we bring it or not from our side. But if it works well, we will try to do more like expand the menu, different plates, like make it a little bit more fancy to to for the customers.
Okay.
Questions? No, I'm good.
Let's move forward.
I'm just getting thumbs up over there. We can do that now again. Yes, I mean, I think this is consistent with what we've, the approach we've taken with other restaurants. I mean, even taco joints. So I'm not hearing any objections there. So what we'll do is send you back with staff. You can get your paperwork in order. And then we'll look to issue a liquor license at a board meeting in the future.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our last item for discussion this evening is the beautification banner designs that were included in your packet. That'll ask Director Wolf or Trustee Guyer, whoever to talk.
Yeah, I'll let Mark take this. Just real quick, though, these banners were planted many, many years ago. I was one of the guys that installed them, that's how long ago it was. And we primarily focused on downtown Douglas Road and there's just a lot of banners in a in a small area. So the committee and with Mark, we decided that we needed to do something different. And so Mark actually drove around and came up with the plan, so I'll let him present it.
Well, Trustee Guyer stole my thunder, that's all I had, but. No, I mean, our our plan throughout this process was really kind of do a face lift on our banner program. One of the big things, too, that we looked at was we're doing seasonal banners currently. So we've got obviously four different banner types that we utilize. And one of the things we're looking to move forward with is is consolidating that down to to having up for two seasons. There's always a different wear factor as far as the seasons go. Our winter banners seem to take the most abuse. So we're hopeful that by splitting the seasons in half and having banners up for the same amount of time, we'll get a consistent wear pattern as far as the banners go and it'll help us for budgeting and replacement in the future as well. Like like Trustee Guyer pointed out, too, we want to expand the area in which we're focusing on. Primarily, we did the Douglas Road corridor and then the areas throughout the downtown here by Village Hall. So the new plan is kind of proposed reducing the number of and volume of banners in those locations and then relocating into other areas such as Gordon Road, Simpson, Concord, Concord Road and other areas out west and as well as Goodwin areas farther to the east. So again, trying to broaden our our spread as far as the banners and and what we're trying to achieve. So again, as President Broly stated, the banners that the beautification committee has has accepted and would like to move forward with were included in the packet. So I think we were just looking for a little feedback from Village Board on their take on the design and different concept.
All right. Are you looking for some thumbs up?
How big are these?
So these banners will be just slightly smaller than the current banners, not by much. So about the same size.
So are these?
Is what we currently have up.
Are these, is it like one and three are together for like fall and spring?
Correct.
And?
Yep. There'll be alternating patterns, kind of similar to what we, it's the same concept as what we have now where you'll see a welcome and then whatever the seasonal banner is and kind of a staggered pattern. So we're trying to keep that same theme rolling throughout. So again, just minimizing the amount that we're putting out, so it's not overly cluttered, I guess, with banners.
Sounds great. I mean.
I like them.
Yeah. I like the expanding it out west and including everybody. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Nice job to the committee.
All right. Moving on to newer unfinished, I'm sensing some heartache on the to my right here this evening.
Well, I'm not, I'm not talking much till, I'll have to come next year when I'm not trustee and because we're like the Cubs now, we're waiting till next year.
I'm sorry.
I have a couple of items.
Sure.
A resident, a couple of months ago had brought up to me an issue. And it's Deer Point at Concord. On as you are headed down, it's Deer Point, not Deerfield, right? Deer Point. Deer Point, as you're headed south, you're getting ready to turn left onto Concord to head east on Concord. The way that that road comes in and curves, you've got to pull pretty far out in front of the sidewalk because there are some juniper on the left hand side that are pretty tall. And the vehicles are coming around that that turn and the vehicles aren't even speeding, but you're almost getting whacked because you can't see them until the last minute. So if we could remove the junipers from that location to that residence fence, I think that'll allow better visibility. And.
So can we have stat, Pete and Mark?
Take a look at it.
Look at the site distance on that, just to make sure that's compliant.
And I've been there turning left and yeah, it's it's a little dicey because the cars coming down Concord are clipping. So it's a little bit of a blind spot when you're turning out.
And then my second item.
Still see when you drive.
Director Zofol, the traffic control discussion will be at next meeting?
That is my understanding. We're meeting on it this week at the staff level, so then it should be ready to bring you at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Anything else? I, it's very nice to see Trustee Spurling. It's been a while since I've seen you, so it's very nice to see you.
It's nice to be in the building.
We thought you were just a cardboard cutout.
All right. Future meetings, you can see them there. We do have a board meeting on February 8th. Are we having intergovernmental on February 8th or?
Yes.
Okay. So item E there, that's really February 8th at 6:00 PM in this room, I would assume, so we can stay separated. If anything changes, we'll let you know. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session, so we will not return to discuss the employment of an employee.
So moved.
Second.
The Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And Trustee Lee.
Yes.
All right. We're adjourned, thank you.
Smile, Laura.
And Laura, don't go.